I'm going to call the January tenth, twenty twenty-three, open session meeting, the air planning board to order. Uh, first matter of business is to approve the agenda.
It's amled.
Second.
Any discussion?
Strike.
Yeah, we could announce that Asoya has requested a, uh, that the hearing be continued. Uh, so the next meeting on January twenty-fourth. As we have a written correspondence from our attorney Givens.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have to like open it and move it? Is that one of those things or we just let it?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Well, once we get to that, once we get to it.
We'll, we'll open it.
We can open it to say, you know, right, forward discussion.
And then do we have a second vote to continue the hearing as well?
Uh, no, yeah, I think you can do it in one, one, one motion. Yeah.
Okay, great.
We can't just put it down?
So, uh, with that change, all in favor?
Please.
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Aye.
On the agenda.
On the agenda?
Yes, to the agenda.
It's unanimously approved. Excellent. So the fir-, uh, any, no covenant bond released tonight?
No.
Okay. And that brings us to Arizona two.
I have to accuse myself.
You gotta shut up. Yes, I am glad you told me.
So.
Hey.
Okay, before we get too far on this, uh, yeah, Ken's got to refuse himself.
Nice to meet you, uh, Susan.
On the advice of our town council, KP Law, specifically Amy Quessell. Um, she stated that, uh, the covenant that they prepared cannot be released until a peer review engineer has looked at the work to determine what has been done and what has not been done according to the approved plan set. And that will determine the price on the remaining work as far as the, the bond that would replace the covenant.
That's the schedule received, received at the last meeting.
Uh, there was a schedule.
The price of the remaining work.
Oh, okay.
Wasn't your schedule of fees that was proposed, ten thousand, two hundred fifty dollars?
There was, um, you're in receipt, I think, of an email that I had forwarded to yourself and the commission, conservation commission, and I, I assume the board members have seen it. I don't know if, if you have or not, but, um, we got some additional information since our last meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I do believe you have to introduce yourself to our purpose of me.
I'm sorry, I'm Cal, I'm Cal Goldsmith from GPR, and this is my client Rohit Guard. And his attorney, Liz.
My client.
Um, so we got some additional information after the last meeting. We've completed our, our survey of the property, our construction record, field work, and we examined that survey and saw that, and, and we also received the email from Dan Van Scholp, Scholpwick. From DPW.
Yeah, he says Skalpwick.
Skalpwick? Good, thank you. Um, and he had called out a number of items that he thought was, uh, missing, and when we looked at, between that and when we looked at our, our construction record plans, uh, we saw that the, the width on the driveway was substantially, uh, below what was supposed to be. And at that point, I said, that's kind of last straw. Let's, let's go back and look at everything on the plans, the, the August plans, and let's do a comprehensive view of everything we need to do to make this project correct. Um, I've got a, and Rohit agreed to do that, and so we did that, and in our reply to Dan, we, we answered all of his questions in his letter. And if you'd permit me, I'd like to actually go through that reply to him tonight, if, uh, if you can hear it.
Is that the reply to which we've already replied?
Um, I'm not sure. No, Dan, Dan had a separate, uh, reply that I believe was, uh, Dan meeting, uh, in consultation with the fire department.
Right. He had sent, you had asked us to get a letter from the fire department. Fire department said, we're gonna do it with DPW, so what, they issued a joint letter. So the fire department and the DPW issued a letter, which is what.
And, and, forgive me, Kyle, there's actually, there is a joint letter, but then there is a separate memo from fire as well.
Haven't, we haven't seen that. Uh, we only got.
It does exist, okay.
We only got this one because we got it through Calvin Moore.
Okay.
So they didn't send it to us, but we got it.
Okay.
For some reason, and I don't understand why, but we haven't seen the fire memo yet. But with, with this, uh, with this letter, um, we answered Dan's, uh, criticisms and critiques as we went through. And at the same time, then, we expanded upon some things that we thought ought to be done beyond what he was asking for, uh, to correct it. And then, after that, we engaged Sydney Landscaping, who's a local contractor in town, does very nice work. Um, I had seen a project, I had worked with him on a project recently, so we called him. He came right out to the site and gave him the scope of work that's contained in this, and he agreed to do that. And Rohit has executed a contract with him for some sixty-something thousand dollars worth of work. So we took that, those prices and, and that list of work, and that's what I created, uh, this memo from. At the end of this memo, uh, we've listed three, three lists of work. The first one is the list we went over with you at the last meeting, which was the ten thousand dollars. The second one is work that is being done right now, uh, for the last week or so. He's been out there. Uh, Sydney Landscaping's been out there, has been working on some of the things that Dan called out as deficient, and some of the things that we've called out that need to be repaired. And then, uh, the third list of work is things that Sydney has been contracted to do that he won't be able to do until the spring, uh, because of slope stability issues. We don't want to be grading slopes in the winter where we can't, uh, plant anything and get anything to grow, so. Um, but the vast majority of the work that is in, uh, number two will be done shortly, and some of the work in number one, the original bond we gave you, was done, as we said it would be, the, the guardrail installation, uh, swing gates, chipping out the ledge. Um, that work has been done. Um, so what we're proposing is a bond to finish that, to, uh, to, uh, secure that third list of work, but I'd like to go through Dan's memo if, if, uh, you're willing to do that.
Now, this document, you're going off of your response, we haven't seen before, is that correct?
No, I emailed that. That's what I emailed to you last week.
Okay, alright, then.
To you, to Mark, to the chair of the conservation commission, to Dan. It was directed to Dan because the letter came from Dan, but I copied, I copied you all, I copied Jeff as well.
It may have been the one that we saw. Yeah, well, yeah, well, so.
This was sent to you last Thursday or Friday.
Yeah. Process-wise, I just want to make a point that I am trying to set up an internal meeting with Dan and a few key people to go over whatever you were gonna give us tonight, you know, and discuss it. So, you know, the planning board will not make any decisions this evening, but we will gladly take whatever you have for us and, and have a meeting about it.
So what, basically what we've done is, you asked Dan to, to review the project and give you a list of stuff, which he did. And so we responded back to him and satisfied his concerns, we assume, with this letter and the work that we're doing.
He responded to you and said he was satisfied?
We have not.
Okay, so then he's not satisfied.
Well, we believe we have satisfied his concerns.
No, that's not what's important. What's important is if he's satisfied, he says so, not whether you think he's satisfied, you say so.
I understand that, but we will have that conversation with him. I think he's gonna be happy because we're basically giving him everything that he's been asking for. For instance, um, he did ask for construction record plans, and we've agreed to do that a long time ago. He also said he wanted a stamped set of stormwater management calculations, uh, which we are going to give him. They're just about completed. The stormwater system, uh, has been shown to work very well with the, with the changed plans, and as we expected it would, because it's, it's overdesigned now for what, uh, what we had. Uh, so I told, in, in this letter, I told him that we'd give him both of those things. He had concerns about the guardrail, the fact that it was too low. Uh, the guardrail was raised and, and was installed. He correctly pointed out that was a public safety issue. We felt so as well. So the guardrail has been installed at the correct height. Um, he also talked about the side of the road where the pavement was raised. They had to raise the pitch, and so it was kind of, I think you pointed out in our walk, it was kind of a vertical drop on the side underneath the pavement. Um, and that, you know, we've talked to Sydney about, and he's placing boulders alongside that to build it up, so then he can add dense grater base next to the road to support the edge of the roadway. Uh, he's in the process of doing that. It's still under construction. Um, we're talking to him about exactly how to, how to do that, make sure that that roadway is supported on the other side of the road, the right side as you go down the hill. That has already been supported, and in addition, there was a, a, uh, conservation agent asked us to move the pile of loam that was on the left side of the driveway, and we used that pile of loam to, to fill around the first tree box filter, so now it looks like a nice smooth slope instead of that thing standing up. So there's some things like that that we're doing. Um, and on that driveway slope, that'll, that'll retain that, uh, that base so that it doesn't erode any, at all. And, uh, as I said, the guardrail was raised to its proper height. Um, he pointed out that he was unhappy with the retaining wall, uh, appeared to be bulging. Now, the retaining wall was put in under the supervision of a registered structural engineer. So he was actually on the site when that wall was installed, and he admits it's pretty wavy. However, the wall was reinforced properly with the, the geotechnical tiebacks. And with the exception of the far east end of the wall, at the very end of it that needs to be rebuilt, and he pointed that out, which is gonna happen.
Where it meets the culvert?
No, at the other end. We'll talk about that.
At the other end, because I saw some chroming.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a second. At the, at the far, at the first end that you see coming down the hill, it was bulging a little bit there because it's not supported at the very end. Uh, he wanted us to fix that, but he also said that the top layer, uh, cause we had them add block to the wall to raise it up so we could pitch the driveway properly, and he wanted that top layer reinforced. So that top layer's gonna be removed, reinforcing fabric placed and, and some of the gravel in the road dug out, reinforcing fabric placed, tied into that top wall, then that'll be replaced, and then the gravel replaced over the, over the fabric. Now, the other thing we've asked them to do, and this is again a little bit above and beyond, is we want that, the wall comes out and then steps down one, and then about the middle of the wall steps down again. We want that step continued all the way to the end, because that'll give us a little more room.
Raise the part.
To raise the wall. We're gonna reinforce it anyways, we might as well put another block in, raise that. That'll allow us to pitch towards the drainage in a little more positive manner. Um, the other thing we're gonna do that we've always planned to do, obviously is needed, is to fill in between the wall and the edge of the driveway, so that's smooth like the edge of the wall. Um, the structural engineer, uh, made his recommendations, and that's what we're going by. And then he will come back out, look at it again, and he will certify the wall as being structurally sound. Um, we've also got a requirement. The building inspector did not see the wall when it was under construction, so our contractor will call the building inspector when he puts in that next layer of geotech fabric, have him come out and see it before he compacts it.
Cause I remember that was an issue that Charlie wanted to see that, so you're gonna combine that with.
We will, and, and Charlie has also told us that he will want the contractor to dig a trench where he says right at the edge of where the geotech fabric is, so he can observe the different layers all the way down, which is fine. We shouldn't have no issue with that. Um, so he'll do that as well, and, and our contractor, Sydney, is well aware of that. He's, and we've put it on him to coordinate with Charlie so that he comes out at the appropriate time. Uh, so he'll do that. And then the last thing that, that we're gonna do, uh, is we're gonna place capstones on top of the wall instead of leaving the exposed blocks there, so we'll put capstones along the top of the wall. Do that. Um, now the, uh, let me see if I'm getting ahead of myself. So, the other thing we're gonna do, you, you mentioned the culvert. So at the culvert itself, on the easterly side of the culvert, so it's, it's the southeast side of the culvert, um, where they had just stacked some blocks and they had plans to come back and dump some concrete in there, which.
The uphill side of the culvert, left-hand side as you go down the hill.
As you go down this hill, first side you get to on the left, yes. So they, they had just stacked some blocks in there that,
Yep.
you know, fell over, which is ridiculous. So, um, what Sydney is gonna do with that is he is actually going to take that part of the wall apart, put full blocks into the culvert to tie into the culvert, and then work it back and put the half blocks in as he ties back into the existing wall. So that'll allow it to be done properly, look better, hold it up properly, and stabilize that end of the. Now, it doesn't need to be tied into the, the wall to be stable because it's got the reinforcing, but it's a, you need to make that connection so that it keeps her, keeps it from eroding. So he will do that. He'll do the same thing on the other side of the wall, and then we've also asked him to continue the other side of the wall about another twenty or thirty feet out, because it's still a pretty steep slope right there leading down to the, to the, uh, where the water is. So we asked him to extend that out to where the slope kind of dies away into the existing grade. So he's gonna do that as well. Uh, so we're extending that. Again, that's not something that Dan was asking for. It's something we thought should be done. So that basically takes care of the wall, and it will be properly, uh, tied into the culvert as it needs to be. There was a question of his about some areas of stormwater where it looked like it was just, uh, puddling without positive drainage away, and on the right-hand side, that actually is the case, because there was a little dip in it. Um, but we've, and that will infiltrate, but we've had Sydney put in some three-to-five-inch stone in that area so that now we'll, the water will sit down under the stone. It won't be obviously puddled and it will infiltrate into the ground. But it was, the drainage system will still work just fine. We've also had him remove the silt sack, or it, it's actually filter fabric that was over the beehive grate that was constraining the flow into that. Uh, but we did ask him, and Rohit's got it, it'll be delivered tomorrow, to install a silt sack, proper silt sack on that beehive grate until such time as all the construction is done, so that it catches whatever silt might make it into there, which ought to be very minimal at this point, but since we're, we're still in construction, we ought to do that.
It's too bad we didn't have any heavy rainstorms recently to see how it worked, huh?
Yeah. Um, drainage system worked good.
I'm glad. No, I'm, I'm being a little facetious, as you know, but I've, I've inspected them in heavy rainstorms.
Kind of sense it.
Not yours.
Uh, and then, uh, Dan questioned the stormwater system. Um, the stormwater system, they, as I pointed out in the letter to him, was put in the way it was designed to be put in, um, with two small caveats that I'll talk about at the end, but the system was put in with the full hundred twenty feet of four-foot diameter pipe for storage, and it flows on the, in that whole area, the, the way it was intended to flow into the system. It's functioning properly. Uh, it's what we wanted to see. Um, and the calculations, we've just gone through a full set of, I mean, Kyle did the calculations, so we had to have, uh, another engineer, a very sharp guy named Huck, who's been in here before, uh, go through the calculations, kind of get into Kyle's head with how we had modeled it, understand the modeling, get with our chief engineer, make sure that he agreed with what the approach was, and then remodel the whole thing to make sure that it worked properly, and it does. So we're very happy with that. So we'll be able to provide those calculations. Uh, we're gonna expect to be giving Dan an interim construction record plan uh, within the next week or two, and we will attach those stamped calculations to that plan. Uh, I say interim because it's gonna show everything done at the end of Sydney's second work list that he's doing now. And then we'll have to do a final construction record plan after Sydney is done in the spring. But this at least, we'll get a construction record plan in Dan's hands so we can see what's been done out there and all the changes that we've made recently, as well as give him a set of stormwater calculations. Um, Dan pointed out the side slopes of the driveway. Uh, he pointed out two things. One, the side slopes of the driveway are, uh, should be two-to-one horizontal or vertical, and, and there were some places where it's too steep. He's absolutely right. We saw that in the field. We also saw it on our, our survey plans when we got them, survey data back. Uh, so we've gone through with Sydney Landscaping and pointed out areas that we want the, the slopes to be stabilized or, or kicked out further, so it's more of a two-to-one slope. Um, and he is gonna do that. Um, a lot of that, he will do, he will do some of it now if he can, but where it's, it's gonna be, and there are some areas where he can do that pretty easily, and it's not gonna be an erosion threat. But there are other areas where it's pretty steep and it leads to wetlands below. Those areas he's not gonna be able to do until springtime. And so we've reserved for both of that. The other point Dan called out is that the driveway was not built to the eighteen-foot width that we had originally, uh, shown when we had the big retaining wall and the big swath. And of course, we had to scale that back down to a fourteen-foot width in order to get it in without putting the retaining wall in, which is something we've talked about right, right from the beginning and talked about with him as well. Um, but that fourteen-foot width is a pretty generous single, single lane uh, width, with, if it's well done, with, with proper slopes on each side, it should not be an issue for any kind of vehicle that needs to get in there. Um, and the problem we, we also saw is the pavement was supposed to be a thirteen-foot width, or fourteen-foot width too. And what they actually did is they paved it to a fourteen-foot width, and then they put a berm on the right-hand side of it. So effectively limiting the traveled way to thirteen feet. So, in the spring, when they come out to do the, the cross berms that we've talked about to feed the,
Treebox.
The tree box filters, thank you. Um, we're gonna have them remove that berm, extend the base out two feet, and then put the berm on the outer edge so that we have fourteen-foot traveled way. And that'll have the additional benefit, which I'm very happy about, it'll have an additional benefit of extending the edge of the roadway over the first line of blocks and the tree box filters. So instead of having blocks with open tops filled with dirt where the water can get in before it gets into the tree box filters, that'll be paved over, and the chute will lead right to the tree box filters. So again, little things, but the kind of things that we picked up going through a more detailed review, we wanted to correct. And then, of course, we'll put in the four-inch-high, four-foot-wide berms, angled berms feeding each tree box filter in the spring when the weather's warmer. Uh, that we talked, we acknowledged that in our first list. Um, the gravel portion of the driveway, uh, obviously will be, will be widened to the fourteen feet as well, down the length of it. Uh, there's some areas where we hit some ledge on the right side where it's very steep on the left, and we don't wanna go, cannot go beyond the limit of work that was defined there by the, the hay bale, so Sydney's got a big machine that he thinks he can bust that ledge out and widen the driveway to the right side. So as you're going down the driveway, it's on the right, steep slopes on the left, and if you can get the thirteen feet by widening and pushing that ledge back and then extending that swale through to the, to the tension basin on the other side of that.
Is that a springtime operation?
No, that's something he's gonna do now.
That's something you could do now?
Yeah, that's something we, we'd like to get done now. And the other thing that we've asked them to do is regrade the roadway. Uh, obviously, if you've walked it, you'll see that there's some areas that kind of, you know, are not, I mean, you'll never get a gravel roadway perfect, but that gravel roadway, uh, is far from perfect. So he is going to add dense grater base. Actually, I think he's added, uh, like the regrinding, um, gravel to the top of that roadway. He's already got the material at his yard, and I think he started bringing some in so that he can regrade that driveway smooth rather than with the irregularities that are in it, and also give it a little more positive pitch to get the drainage to work the way it was designed to work, uh, to the right side of that. Uh, and that's something he intends to do this fall too, before the, this fall while it's winter, but before, before things freeze up too much. And even if it freezes, he can still place that stuff and grade it. It'll just freeze in place. Uh, so that's fine.
How about the, uh, the turnaround for the, the kind of fire turnaround that had to be moved down?
Yeah.
Remember, there was some issue about the substrate there and perhaps an improvement with stone or something?
Yeah, he's, well, he's gonna regrade that as well. He'll be, he'll be adding some material to that to level that off and, and get it to drain properly.
What do you mean by the stone? Well, I remember there was some concern, and I, I'm not sure I'm gonna get the details right, that, that, that surface would not be, as it's was seen, you know, last, a week or two ago. Uh, it was some, because our weather was sufficiently stable, you know, to get trucks.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a gravel material that uh, was a little bit muddy at the time, because it had been, you go through freeze thaws and, and you can never get away without that completely, but, you know, when everything thaws, it's stable. When everything's frozen, it's stable. When the top three inches are thawed and the bottom three inches of foot or whatever is frozen, is when you get the problem. So he will add this other material, which is the regrindings, to that as well, and that'll, that'll help that, uh, be a little more stable and keep that.
He may be, he may be referring to something that we haven't seen.
No, we talked, I saw.
No, he, he mentioned, he made, he mentioned earlier, the chairman, that there was a fire department letter.
That we haven't seen yet.
The fire department letter states that. We have not seen that letter.
That could be. Yeah, that could be.
This is the first we've heard of this. So it would be great.
But in any case, we did talk to Sydney about that. We've included that in, in his, his regrade. His regrading goes all the way to the, right up to the arrays. Now, yeah, sure.
Regrind's gonna be added all the way from the arrays to the end of pavement?
Yes. Yeah. Um, uh, Dan also talked about the fact that the driveway in the original design, the slope went all the way almost to the culvert, and that's what was paved. Now the slope starts, stops short of that, and with, the pavement stopped at the base of that steep slope. So he pointed that out as well. He was concerned about erosion at the end of that gra, at that pavement, because we don't have those diversion berms in place. Uh, so we, Rohit placed three-to-five-inch stone, a mat of that at the end of the driveway, so that when the water comes off, it hits that, and that disperses the velocity and lets it just seep into the ground or off to the side. And in a couple of storms we've had, I've looked at it, and it's, it's been pretty good. Now, if you go out there now and look at it, it's been getting a lot of traffic from excavators and things as Sydney works on it. So I've told him when he gets done with the work that he's doing up there, he's gotta remove that stone, replace it with clean stone, which he will do.
In my understanding is that those, I don't know what to call them, the speed humps that are gonna divert water to the tree boxes, that will decelerate the water sufficiently so that when it comes off the grate, the, um, paved portion and hits the unpaved gravel portion, that it won't erode precisely because you've decelerated the water. Is that correct?
It's more than deceleration, it's diverting. It's essentially diverting.
The bottom of the wire will pop to a third.
Bottom of the driveway shouldn't see much water.
If it's basically three, it shouldn't be a third.
Okay, we're gonna keep that.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we'll keep that stone in place. There's no reason not to, but, uh, but it should, it's well protected now. So that is, I think.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, 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 I appreciate, no, I'm trying to get clarity, so that's good.
I think we've covered everything that we're doing, so that, just to go over these, uh, these three lists of work. The first one is the original bond estimate we gave you. Um, the second one is the additional work to be done shortly, so there's three items there. The retaining wall, repairs and modifications we talked about. Um, and he, he does it based on how many days he thinks it's gonna take him. Rohit already has the materials. Uh, so he said three days. He gave us the price of twenty-seven hundred dollars a day, which is ninety-five hundred bucks to do that. That started tomorrow, by the way. He's starting on that. The block is sitting there on a pallet. It was at Moore's. He went and got it, brought a pallet out there. Uh, the paved driveway, widening reinforcement. Um, so it's not the redoing of the driveway itself, but it's the side slope redoing. Uh, he's, he's done a good bit of that, but he's, he figured four days of that, which is about eleven thousand dollars. And then the additional driveway surfacing materials, uh, I don't know if it was two hundred, two hundred fifty tons, whatever he planned, was another nine thousand dollars for a total, for that work of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred, which is work he's doing right now that we expect will be done before he quits for the winter, unless we get a blizzard tomorrow, which doesn't look likely.
He's got a good week to work.
Yeah, he's got a good week to work. He had a, uh, my, he had a warm week last week, but it was pretty rainy, so it was limited on how much he could do. Um, the third, the third, uh, list is the work that he won't do till the spring that we're proposing an initial bond for, the cover. Um, that list is spreading loam and seed on the detention basin slopes themselves. Um, cause we had talked about doing some of that, and it never really got into the first, the first bond, so we talked about reseeding the array, but we didn't talk about the basin. So he's gonna do the basin uh, and put loam and seed on the basin. He's also gonna adjust the driveway side slopes to a two-to-one, uh, slope where it needs to be adjusted, which we said we wouldn't do until the springtime. And I, you know, he may be able to do some of that now, if he does, great, but we don't wanna do anything that's gonna be an erosion concern over the, over the winter. Uh, so the loam and the seed on the detention basin was four thousand dollars. Uh, the gravel slopes, uh, is another sixty-five hundred dollars, including the fill that he bring in to do that. Uh, additional driveway grading for better drainage is just a resurfacing that we're talking about. That's another five hundred dollars. Uh, he's gonna, I think he's already done this, lowering the beehive grate rim, close, lower elevation on the right, on the right side there. And if you went out and looked at it now, he's got that all filled in with, with three-to-five-inch stone. We've asked him to shape that swale and take some of that stone out so that it creates a, a pond there. And, uh, Nick ran the, the drainage couch to see how sensitive it is to that detention, and it's really not at all sensitive to it. We could eliminate it, but it's not, that's not a good, a, a good thing to do. We've got, even with the stone in there, we've got a forty, it's like a forty percent void ratio in the, in the big stone like that of storage, but we've asked him to take out a lot of that stone and form a bowl. in the big stone like that of storage, but we've asked him to take out a lot of that stone and form a bowl, like a little basin there where that beehive grate is. So he'll do that for us. That's that's five hundred dollars. And then till, finish grade and reseed the solar array. We've reserved money for that of about three thousand dollars. We've added another thirty five hundred to that, I'm sorry, fifty five hundred to that. So he will go in and till under the, not under the arrays themselves, but in the aisles where where it's gonna get the growth. There'll be some, some growth under the arrays. My experience has been over the next couple of years, you'll see some growth under there. But the growth that we we're trying to really encourage is in the middle where it's gonna get traffic if anybody goes through there. So he'll till in the stuff that's there now and and then reseed that. And he's suggesting hydroseeds, but and then the last, so there's there's the last two things that we discovered that we wanna see corrected. There's supposed to be two six inch ports going into that big pipe.
For cleanup?
For cleanup. So you could put a pipe in there and pump sediment out of that or measure the amount of water in it or whatever you need to do. You don't want people climbing in there. I'm not gonna put a manhole in there, but we need these six inch ports and those are not installed. They did not get installed. So that's something that either Sydney's gonna have to do or we're gonna have to bring this other contractor back to do. We've gotta get those two installed. And then the last thing is there's a two inch pipe coming out of that, that, those big detention areas that's supposed to feed replication area number one. It does come out, but it doesn't go all the way to replication area number one. So we need to extend that two inch pipe over just so it drains at a low velocity into that well and the areas that well and gets, it's gonna get a lot of water anyways off the slope, but but we specifically designed it with that pipe, so we wanna see that done. So the total of that work, those last two are thirty five hundred and then a thousand dollars each. So the total of that work that we're proposing additional bond for is twenty six thousand five hundred. And the bond that, and we're also proposing that the initial bond of ten thousand two fifty continued to be held for the time being, even though we've done some of that work already. Which would give you a a total of about thirty six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars of bond money after the work that we're doing now gets completed for the balance of the work. And that's based upon a hard contract from a contractor to do the exact work that we've talked about. So I think, you know, we we went back and looked at it hard and we tried to give you as comprehensive a view of everything that needs to be done. There was more there than than we expected to find, but but we found it and that's what we're proposing to do. Understand that your town council has given you advice. We would, we're trying to lay all our cards on the table. Rohit has, the testing on the on the system out there has been complete. The system is off as it's supposed to be. If you go out there, you'll see a meter on the pole and that meter is live because that meter is connected to the grid. It's not connected. That's, it's connected to the grid and it's connected back to his transformer, which is also powered off the grid. But the switch between that transformer and the solar arrays is what's off. So there's nothing being generated from that system at this point. So if you go out there and and see the meter and it looks like it's active, it is. But that's because it's connected to the to the grid, not because it's being powered.
Is that closer to the entrance or closer to?
Entrance.
The entrance. It's near the entrance, yeah.
It's natural grid meter.
Put them where they can get to them easy.
Yeah, that's what they wanna do. So laying all our cards on the table, Rohit has contractual obligations with this. He needs to turn this thing on by the twenty sixth at the very latest of January. So we are hoping that after you talk with town council and we get some discussion with Dan Bench, Van Skalkwick, that that we can make that happen so that we get permission from this board once you're satisfied that we've covered all our bases and given you adequate security, that you give permission to Rohit to turn the system on as of the twenty sixth. That's our goal.
Next meeting's the twenty fourth?
Right, yeah. Well, thank you, Cal, for the presentation. Yeah, if you could send me what you just described.
You've got it. You've got it.
All right, maybe just in case.
Ross, I'll be happy to, I've got two copies.
I'm not joking. I don't recall this one.
Well, that's okay.
Well, I will, we said to make sure, but I said it last, last week, actually.
I plan to talk, I plan to talk to Dan Friday in any case, and so I will apprise him of I will apprise him of what went on and what may come of this is a meeting with Dan and maybe one or two of us prior to that, you know, the more formal meeting where you talked about the infrastructure record.
We'd be very appreciative of that.
Okay.
And
I think we've addressed his concerns. The only thing we can't do is build an eighteen foot wide driveway because we need a big wall for that. We're not doing that, so. Other than that, I think we've satisfied, that's why I feel we're satisfied. Just things we'll see if he agrees.
So, you know, we'll, we'll meet with Dan, we'll, we'll discuss and we'll, you know.
Yeah, we'll take it from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that from before the holidays, when you did do the vote at one point and you looked at me and you said, just don't make me regret this, I'm just trying to tell you that we are trying to step up and make sure that we're not making this board look like they made a mistake. And so that's why we're just making sure to back, say, we gotta make sure everything looks done correctly from the beginning.
I appreciate.
We made the mistake, but we just wanna make sure that we're stepping up and not looking like we're trying to do something wrong.
I appreciate that. And then from our perspective, I just have to talk to our experts and review before we can arrive at any meaningful decision for you.
Understood.
Jeff, may I ask a question? I don't recall, you said you're putting in dense graved or crusher run?
They're doing crusher run for the surfacing.
But not dense graved?
Dense graved is being used.
For the resurfacing of the road?
Not for the resurfacing of the road, but for for filling in next to the wall.
Okay, thank you.
Because we wanna, we wanna do that and behind, and to support it up on the top between the.
You mentioned you're doing four and five inch stone in some places, but you're using crusher run, three quarter inch most places, dense graved with the stone dust in it along the wall.
Yes.
Thank you. We all say the same things, but they don't always mean the same thing.
Understood. Yep, that's the plan. But the material that's surfacing the driveway is different from what we're using.
Yeah, it's pretty clean, you said.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I just wanna ask my colleagues if they have any further questions for Cal and Rohit.
Mr. Nathan?
I have one, I think it's it's more directed probably to the, to the board to mark in light of this project, which is before we've had projects that have minor changes, right? Minor, or we debate, right? Applicant brings a change and it's, and there's, there's apparently a threshold, right, that it's either a minor change or a major change, which a major change requires reapproval, minor changes do not. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes.
Changes to the entrance roadway.
There's, I mean, this is, and in time, it was about twenty, thirty minutes of discussion of changes. So I'm not, I think somebody has to make a declaration, whether it's major or minor. It's not, not for me to decide. I think the, but I think what's going to be very important for any, any chance of the twenty sixth is this drawing that compares it to. So that that assessment can be made.
The drawings that you received in August basically are the drawings that we used to do this reconstruction. So there are, there's a five, there's a five page set of drawings that we've given you in August that I actually have on this.
I don't recall that.
Yeah, well.
I'm, I'm very sorry. I don't recall that.
It's part of it, part of the whole review. We'll be discussing with council, but I, you know, I wanna.
But there were, there were certain drawings in August and that is what we followed. Now that the construction record drawings will give you how close to those plans we are.
Regardless of what drawings came in.
Yeah.
It's gonna be very important that those drawings for, to be reviewed by the twenty fourth, if not before.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so what was shown to the board in August? The changes that are being proposed today are to conform to those previously approved plans that were deemed not to be major or substantial. And so the discrepancies are, are what is being addressed with.
So, yeah, his changes today were not.
They're not changes from what was approved. They're changes on that, when we, when they visited the site, there was changes from what was approved. And so we're fixing those changes to match what was approved.
Yes, I, I have not seen a drawing since this was approved a year and a half, two years ago. We talked, when we did our site walk.
We did site walk, we did submit, we did.
July.
Yeah, we did one in July, we did in August.
And there was a, we had a promise of a drawing mid, off to mid-August. And that's, that's one I haven't seen.
Oh, that, you have that.
I don't think I've seen that either. And, Jeff, you have a com, you have a comment?
My comment is whether or not I've seen the drawings, is my understanding that these are deficiencies to bring the site up to what was in those drawings and all this.
That's correct.
Um, chances, so since I typically insist upon paper copies, I sometimes get them and I don't even check email for drawings. So I may even have a copy at some point, but I don't know.
I think Kyle actually came in and talked to you about.
Yeah, I, I actually, because I, I, I do all the paper. I can't do the stuff on the screen.
Okay.
I drive him crazy because I want copies, so.
I'm, look, at this point, I can't verify what, what happened. It's, it's all moot at this point.
Let's make sure we have a copy of it, so, yeah.
So I guess the only point I'll make is at that time where we presented you with the drawings of what we were gonna do, then when you said, okay, proceed, that's what we took to be your determination that we could use those plans.
May I ask? And this is the set of drawings that the DPW was working with also?
Yes.
Okay. So, so at some point, a set of drawings had to come forward.
And conservation.
And conservation, okay. And, great. It's not our bailiwick, but for you, Mr. Chair, do you expect having to vote a conservation for any of these changes?
Well, we've been talking with conservation all along and we talked with them about the changes at that same time. And so we're building this to their, to that specification. From conservation standpoint, their major concern is erosion on the site. There has been no erosion on the site. It's stable. It's been stable for quite a while. Every week, there's a CPESK person from, in Maynard, Epsilon, who comes out, reviews the site, puts a written report out on erosion or not. It's been stable. We have not gone beyond the limit of work that was given. Our stormwater management system is, complies with what was originally designed, not, not even just this. So so there's no real difference or change with, as far as conservation goes in there, within their realm.
Okay. Okay, good. If there's nothing, anything else?
I just didn't hear us conclude what Nathan asked. So maybe, maybe you heard an answer, but can I just see if I understood the conversation that's just gone on? So I heard you ask about major or minor changes to the originally approved site plan, correct? And from there, we then said there were changes that were proposed and approved in August.
Yep.
And that those are the only, this is what we're hearing in this conversation, but we're looking to validate that there are new approved plans from August of twenty twenty two.
Sure.
And I, I'd just like to finish my understanding. Thanks. I heard you. You can hear me. So I heard that August of twenty twenty two, we had made and talked about changes and we're going off of those plans. And from there, I think the question still stands with who's to determine if there are any minor or major changes to that said plan. Am I understanding that? And did we answer that?
May, may I take a shot?
Please.
Okay.
If that's okay, Mr. Chair?
If you, if.
Please do.
Do actually talk in my mind?
Yes.
And I'm more than likely to be both wrong, wrong. We've, just two conversations, okay? What Calvin and Rohit have just told us is a group of deficiencies were identified by multiple people, multiple parties, and they are now addressing those deficiencies.
Right.
Those deficiencies are going to bring the project into compliance with the last set of plans that this board approved.
Right.
If I understand it correctly. So I don't see that we're approving or not a major or minor change right now. I see us as being in a situation where double check this with the, with what we have, that a previous act on the board approved a set of plans.
Right.
Deficiencies were found by us, DPW, Rohit and other people, the proponents and other people. And they're working hard to bring it in compliance with those deficiencies and that set of plans.
Set plans.
So I also heard a couple of other things. Construction drawings, which are as built, will get made. They will, those will show what the differences are on paper between the plan and what they found in the field that they can't do. That's a normal, that's actually a new requirement here in town and a normal, a normal way to go forward. So in fifteen years, when they gotta find that handhole to fix the pipe and it's covered with something, they know where to go and find it. That's what the as builds will give us. Let me just go through my brain. I think that's it. I appreciate the ask about the plans, but I think we have them. We can't.
We wanna be sure.
Yeah, we, we better be sure. But we're also not, we're also not gonna vote right now on it.
No.
No, no, but I'm asking.
But, does, does that help? I mean, that's how I.
It helps. What I recognize is that those areas where I remain confused will not be answered at this meeting and then that, this further work that we have to do.
So if I may point, put a point on that. Uh, thank you, Julie. The, what I'm asking is that for January twenty fourth, we get the most recent approved set of plans. And the motion or the date, we made the motion or the board made the motion to, to do that. Because that's, what I don't know is when that last approval was.
And I think we're gonna get that tomorrow, if possible, that answer?
Yeah.
Please?
And I appreciate the, the question. I don't, I don't, hearing them asking for a change in plans, I hear, I honestly hear a proponent sitting here saying, it's not up to snuff. We gotta fix it. So.
That is what we're saying.
Yeah.
They can say what they would like to say. I'd like to know what we're.
I, I understand that, yeah.
Thank you.
And then it's.
And it's a very detailed list, so.
And then it's, I think it's rather simple to take your new drawing and compare it to the most recently approved drawings.
Sure.
And see what the changes are.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us.
Uh, I'm gonna call a five minute recess. We can go, go get Ken and, uh, if we can back, thanks. All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting back to order.
All right.
Um.
Oh, yeah. Nissoya.
So with Nissoya, what, just in terms of process, we need to open the public hearing and then, and do a continuance?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we continue the site plan special permit, October, O'Leary District and Stormwater Permit hearings for Nissoya Foods USA, One New England Way for a proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements.
Second. All in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? Sorry, yes.
You said you wanna continue it to what date? Date positive?
I'm sorry, to the next meeting.
Yes, which is January twenty fourth.
January twenty fourth.
And the town planner has showed us that we've got communication in that regard from the applicant?
Yes, from attorney Gibbons representing the applicant. And we had a lot of emails going back and forth yesterday to make sure, to see if indeed they could, you know, do that. After seeing engineering comments, they decided they had to.
Okay.
Wait until the twenty fourth.
Okay, that makes sense.
So.
Yes, sir.
I'm happy to amend that to the January twenty fourth meeting.
Do we wanna discuss the fact that we had an onsite meeting already at the, at Nissoya? Just for the record?
Yeah, we should. Let's do that. That'll take just a few minutes.
Because we didn't have that in any other, we, we posted a meeting.
It was posted.
So let's open, let's do just that. And if you would amend it just for opening a meeting and then we'll have a separate for the continuance. Thank you.
I would like to retract my last motion and make the following motion.
Thank you.
I move to continue the site plan special permit, October, O'Leary District and Storm, to open the continued site plan special permit, October, O'Leary District and Stormwater Permit hearings for Nissoya Foods USA, One New England Way for a proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye? Regarding the site visit, there were two salient things that struck me and of course, everyone who was there, please jump in. The first is the boundary between Catania and Nissoya. And we found that it appears that the slope that was constructed, the loam slope that Catania constructed, may actually overlap on, on. may actually overlap on on property that belongs to Nissoya. And of material consequence is the fact that there's one aspect of the stormwater that's failing, there's a scupper and a downspout that's going into the loam, it's already a root of that. And so that obviously is that element of the stormwater for Catania needs addressing, but my understanding is that that issue of the boundary where the proposed parking lot's gonna go in terms of up to the line with Nissoya is gonna, may have to involve some discussions between the two companies regarding how to address that boundary, there's, there was discussion possibly retaining wall, et cetera. Um, I think the important issue is that we understand that that is an issue of negotiation that has to happen, and also that we need follow-up at Catania about what they're gonna do with the stormwater, uh, fixing that that downspout, uh, and the way that border's going. The other thing that was kind of interesting was that we saw, we walked along the easement for the Forest Main, that that runs parallel to Westford Road, and we found that it's it's under a kind of hillock. And there's some question about, well, what's the elevation of the Forest Main, and also whether, we saw that the hillock was very well developed with relatively mature trees. And there's some question about that, so that's just something we wanted to bring to Dan's attention. Those are the salient aspects, I've asked anyone else to contribute things that they saw or remember.
Jump on that.
Please do.
Last one, um, that I don't think we know where the Forest Main is, I think it's part of the survey, so it may be in the.
Okay.
Maybe.
It might not.
Maybe it's not.
A good point, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify for the record that the date thing, we were there because, uh, you know, for the video and for this meeting that we
Yeah.
insert the date of the site meeting, it was.
It was January fifth.
January fifth.
Right.
The board was represented.
Last Thursday, correct?
For our site.
Yes.
Right, yeah, good.
Right.
Rainy.
Uh-huh. I I I have a problem with the, you know, the comment about the, um, location of the lot line between Nissoya and Catania Oil, so and that is, that as we know, the drawings that we got so far, which didn't indicate, pretty sure those drawings did not indicate that elevation, that the topography of that change, it looked to me on the drawing like there was no topography shown there, that's why I was curious to go to the site, because I wanted to see what was going on between those two lots. Now we see, you know, the topography should be shown with hash marks and so forth, two-foot intervals or whatever to show that slope.
Yeah.
But more importantly, I don't know how we can approve a set of drawings at the end if we don't see a retaining wall, we we have to see what's there. How do we speculate what's gonna be there when we sign the drawings? Someone has to show us what's gonna be there.
And that actually raises a question, um, I forget who I was speaking, maybe I was speaking to you, Mr. Chair, about this. Um, do we go back and check the Catania drawings and make sure they're complete?
Yes.
And just kind of look at it, look in all the corners.
Right.
Make sure, you know, check, check on other, check on other cushions, look for coins type stuff. Maybe Catania didn't complete their drawings or something like that, I mean, it wouldn't be unreasonable that in the, the breadth of the Catania project, it got missed.
Yeah.
But one way or the other, it's gonna have to be solved. Um, and the new Catania building with the new down, with the new downspout and scuppers on it, may have introduced something, may have introduced something they didn't realize, was an oversight in the engineering. So I don't think anybody did anything wrong, I think it just needs to be attended to.
So I think there seems to be two issues that we need follow-up on. One is the completeness of the Catania drawings, is that, if I understand you, Jeff, correctly?
I I would say make sure that Catania. Catania may have just missed the whole retaining wall, the the completion of that section.
We just have to know.
We just have to know.
Okay, that's one.
But if it's, because that's one thing, because then we say to Catania, fix it. Then Nissoya and Catania don't have to argue about anything. It just may have not been done in the, in the project, just think it's a quick look.
That's.
So we're, unfortunately, I I didn't make that, so the retaining wall?
The area in question.
Right.
Where it slopes down off of Catania's property.
Yep.
May or may not have on the drawings designed an solution for that.
Oh.
If they're not on the drawing, they drew it, they built it the way it was drawn, somebody missed it along the way. So that's where in the situation where Nissoya and Catania have to fix it. But typically, we're pretty good about stormwater around here, and maybe it wasn't constructed to the plan. I wouldn't spend a huge amount of time on it, but I would look there before the two, look through the approved plans to make sure they built it to plan.
I agree. So that's number one.
Yeah.
And then number two, what about the the erosion that we saw? Who who was responsible, contacted Catania and saying, this needs to be addressed? Is that us as a DPW? Is it the bill, I I wonder who who's the authority that?
I think ultimately, well, we should first make sure that that's the case, and if it is, then notify the building commissioner.
Okay.
He's the zoning enforcement officer, so if it wasn't handled, we have to write a letter to to Charlie. Having him, you know.
Well, well, the first thing is ambiguous, we have to check the drawings to see what, if if there was in fact a a a plan for retention, it just hasn't built, if it is, the the in some ways, our job is simpler, however, the fact that the thing is, what's there is failing is unmistakable.
Hmm.
Uh, because even a a a dullard like myself could see immediately, holy moly, there's something not right here, there's a gully where one shouldn't be. So that one, I think, that's not a matter of checking the drawings, that's just a matter of someone has to say to Catania, you got a problem here. And if that means approaching Charlie to ask Charlie to send a letter, that's what needs to be done.
Okay.
And I, if I may, opine on that, Catania was, they were a great partner in doing this project. I mean, as, I mean, you have sent Charlie a letter, but let's, uh.
Well, if anything, it's most likely an oversight, you know.
Yeah, but let's reach out to Catania, as soon as we figure this out, I think.
Yeah.
I think quite honestly, they'd be interested in finding out about it too.
Of course. Well, they, the applicant did say that the two parties are going to meet, so there's also going to be an element of self-government here, which would be wonderful.
Exactly.
And I think the way he, if I'm not mistaken, the way he spelled it out was that I think the president of Nissoya has to call the president of Catania.
Yes. Yes.
He didn't say that they are going to meet, he said it looks like that. Something needs to happen.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
But the best bet is to just, like Jeff suggests, look at the, the Catania construction plans, make sure, oh, we're looking at that and the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, I don't know if I still have an electronic copy of that or not, we can look at it. Or you have the real drawings.
Oh, yeah, we have the drawings, but there should be electronic ones.
Should be some. The other thing that was interesting about that area was there's a new catch basin that was installed there as well on the Catania plants. And the engineers believe that that catch basin may in fact be on Nissoya's property, that's how close it was to the lot line.
Okay.
So there's a catch basin there too, so something happened there. We'll check it out with the plans.
There's one other issue that might be a non-issue, but it's something I want us to keep an eye on. Uh, part of our comfort with the height of the proposed building, I think, I can't remember, it was seventy-five or seventy-eight for that new refrigeration building. Part of our comfort with that was that we're, we felt good about it because the tree line, uh, along Westford Road would really conceal the height of the building, even at seventy-eight feet in the drawings that we saw. However, when we went onsite, I noticed that many of the tallest trees are not directly, uh, right next to Westford Road, but are actually kind of closer to the Nissoya property, even on part of that berm where they intend to dig out to extend their parking lot. And that means, I saw the flags that they put on the ground, that some of those tall trees are coming down. So I want to be darn sure that we really do have that tree coverage of the of the height of the building, that that's in fact true and will remain true even when those tall trees on that, I don't know what to call it, but a hillock or berm are removed as part of their project, that the other trees remaining by Westford Road really do have that height, are really gonna cover for us, and I think that needs to be double-checked.
I don't, I don't think you're gonna get the coverage because you're gonna lose trees, it can't be as good as it was. But they, if they can assure, if we can see on the plans, the type of quality they're gonna install with new trees that are, you know, non-invasive and whatever the case might be, that they will fill in, that'll, that should answer the problem. But the other thing that we noticed is that the trees are similar to, you know, all the hikes we take. That the lower level of those tall pines don't have any foliage anyway, it's all up at the top. So anything they plant will probably be an improvement in the long run if it fills in the lower level of the, of the, of the, you know, wooded area. So I I think the important thing is gonna be their plant list and how they explain to us how that's gonna fill in those voids.
Quite honestly, under white pines.
Planting list.
Yeah, under story of Mount Laurel, a, um, type of plant, a Mount Laurel on Azariah will fill in over time.
Right.
And that becomes a screening. Rhododendron.
No, 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 I get you talking about.
They're, they're an understory plant.
Right, but again, we're talking about seventy-five foot tall, you know, that that top line, that canopy line, really, I just, I just wanna make sure we get what it is we're looking for, and and it sounds like, you know, I feel confident with this applicant, you know, they seem very eager to work with us and to to, you know, I I don't anticipate a great deal of difficulty there.
They're making a large investment in their future, yeah.
They are indeed.
And they sound like they want to get it done right, and I'm sorry I missed the, um, sidewalk.
It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, I I wanna go out there with somebody to see this.
Yeah, you do wanna see it, it's it's important to get a walk around the property, and and they did a nice job, I thought, the engineers did a nice job of guiding us around. Uh, and Tom Gibbons, by the way, was there as well.
Oh, good.
Their attorney. Um.
One.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
One more area of the sidewalk, if if you're not concluded on that, is, uh, opposite, we put a lot of attention to the Westford roadside. Opposite Westford Road, especially around the abandoned tank.
Yes.
Uh, you know, where they, they're, they're gonna address, according to the walks, snow removal and snow placement. But also there is talk, and we need to see, uh, how this, um, transpires in the drawings about, uh, some, either some modifications of paved space, taking some of the piping down around the tank, I wasn't too sure, but but that whole industrial, the very industrial side.
Yeah.
Um, it's, needs some clarification, we, we understandably put our attention on the Westford roadside, but there's, we should, um, not neglect what's going on around that abandoned tank.
The opposite side of the building from Westford Road?
Yes.
Where it's got, it, yeah, it looks like a Mad Max movie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, so what the rusting tank is, the big rusting tank.
Right.
Why you, yeah.
They talk about what the future plan will be when that comes out, which is out of scope, but what is going to be done in this phase?
Fair enough. Great. Uh, anything else? Do we need a motion to, uh, uh, vote for continuance?
Like to move to continue. The site plan special permit, October overlay district and stormwater permit hearings for Nissoya Foods USA, One New England Way, for proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements to our next scheduled planning board meeting on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Jeff, did you say aye?
Aye, yes.
Aye, 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 and Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. Um, we have a couple of things from the town planner, we have a nice, uh, we have a sheet with an, uh, we have, uh, the status of the subdivisions that we got today. Uh, curly circle, Shaker Mill Pond and Panther Place, I don't know if you all had a chance to to review that. Did you want, do you want to enter this into the record, want to talk about this?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'll just mention, um, yeah, Charlie updated me today on the status of these subdivisions. Curly circle, all the building permits have been issued, but the last two units within the subdivision have yet to be built.
Does that look like it's gonna be deferred till the spring?
Uh, I would think so, yeah. Shaker Mill Pond, all the building permits have been issued, and all the single-family homes have been purchased or have, you know, a purchase and sale essentially closed. But the duplexes are still in progress, so they, they haven't been closed though. Uh, but he says, you know, it's, they're, they're doing a good job there, it's clean.
Yeah.
Uh, Panther Place, uh, he issued in the fall two building permits for the interior lots, uh, lots in the subdivision. Though I guess there's a lifespan on the building permits, if you don't start it within so many months, maybe six months. Uh, they have to be reissued, so he said there's that possibility. So that one, definitely slower, but, uh, yeah, I can't imagine they would be doing much over the winter.
And please forgive my ignorance, I I do believe there are binder there on the road, right, if it is, right, constructed binder.
Did they do the binding?
On Panther Place.
He's Panther Place.
Panther Place is all done, binder, they're running the sewer, the sewer treatment plant is built and and.
I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
They have a diesel generator running the sewer treatment plant from homes that are built, because they don't have power down the street.
Yeah. Right.
The electric company is out there today and has been out there the last couple of weeks.
Right.
They had a delay on their transformers, so they're trying to put the transformers in and get the underground electric done so they can start the houses down there, there's a couple of houses. The rest of it, the rest of it, as you can see, the other homes on Washington Street are done.
Uh, yes, and part of my update, I want to, uh, I cleaned up the request for proposals for engineering services for the definitive plan, Stratton Hill. Uh, I sent it out to four firms so far, Graves Engineering, BSC Group, BHB, and Weston and Sampson, two of which have replied, uh, with interest that they would get us a proposal, Graves and BSC. Uh, BHB and Weston and Sampson haven't replied yet, but it could be, you know, just a matter of timing. I would like to, you know, find a few other firms to, uh, to seek out as well. And I might be picking Dan's, Dan's brain on a few engineering firms there, but we have two that look promising in the pipeline that will get responses back on.
And and and, uh, and but we haven't heard any word from Dave Moulman's representative.
No, 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 not yet, so I'm hoping we can, we can get this firm pretty much in place in time for when they submit their definitives.
That would be great.
Because I would like their assistance in reviewing the plan, certainly, uh, when it comes in. Uh, another update I wanna give is, um, you probably know about the, I think I gave a presentation on this last year, the the MBTA communities were applicable because we have a train station in force. Um, I am meeting, uh, over Zoom with the Panachusa Regional Planning Commission planners, the GIS planners who are doing this. Uh, the state came up with a model, which is extremely complex series of spreadsheets that cover every single lot in town and whether it's applicable or not, so I have like a two-hour meeting with them this Thursday.
What is that?
And Alan and I are meeting about this tomorrow, because there's some questions that we have to answer before I meet with them. Uh, to do the model run, essentially, they input all this stuff and run the model, and it will tell you whether air is in compliance or not. And if so, what we have to do to get it compliant, so that's, you know, something that the Department of Housing and Community Development prepared uh, so that it would be consistent across the whole state, you know, the the towns that, you know, have to meet this. So I will hopefully know a lot more by the end of this week as to what we need to do, um, if anything, for the MBTA communities, so.
Is there a deadline with the MB, we have some kind of submittal on our.
Yeah, we have, uh, by the end of January, we have to submit sort of, you know, the the results of the compliance run, which I think the Regional Planning Commission will do. And then based on that, I have to develop like a few paragraphs of saying what our planned timeline is to develop a bylaw or regulations to meet it.
If we don't.
Should we need a fish?
Should we need to?
Yes.
Should we need a fish?
And the deadlines for that, the deadline to adopt a bylaw, I believe, is the end of twenty twenty-four. So we have, we're trying to actually implement something, but the state wants to have a plan of action by the end of this month, which we can certainly.
We can make that.
Oh, yeah, we can, we can do that. In fact, uh, that's something that the Regional Planning Commissions do with the towns, is to help them with that report if we need some help. So I'll, I'll, I'll know more on, uh, the end of day Thursday after that meeting with them. Should be, should be pretty interesting.
Pardon me, when will we know if we're deficient?
Uh, I'm hoping it's, I mean, end of day Thursday.
Or Thursday.
Yeah. I suspect that if we are, it's minor, that we just have to tweak maybe the general business, I mean, general residence district to maybe decrease the square footage for each additional unit.
Okay.
So that we can get fifteen per, per acre and not twelve like we have now.
So.
That's.
Could we get a summary on the twenty-fourth of January?
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes. Um, let's see, so there's, that's that, some subdivisions.
Have you heard any word on the old firehouse on Washington Street? What's going on there? I know that they.
Yeah, um, they hired, uh, Seal Harvard to do the plans, and in fact, it's GPR that will be working on the engineer plans and have the site plan for the firehouse. Uh, nothing has been submitted yet, but we had a meeting last fall with them about that, uh, so sometime soon.
And, uh, late in the day, I I saw an email that, uh, the New York group interested in West Main Street is coming back.
Oh, great.
Did you guys, did you, who else is on that email?
Oh, DMG group.
DMG group, and that is happening, there's gonna be a presentation to a number of authorities in town, I forget, next one.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, and that I will be attending.
Yeah, I think Alan sent out an invitation to.
What was the time, Rick, you know?
For them to act, I don't know.
No, for the meeting, I think.
Oh, for the meeting, it's three P M, next Wednesday.
Because this is not a board of one, it's going to be a ten block.
Oh, okay, so three P M. Yeah, three P M, uh, next Wednesday. It hasn't been absolutely confirmed, but most, but most everybody is confirming, yes, they can make that time.
Yes, I am looking forward to that meeting.
I I'm pretty sure I can't go because we have to have a quorum, we'd have a quorum there. But um, I I'm curious, is it the same property or a different property?
No, it's across the street.
And that's where it was. It says, is it the same property or a different property? Different property, thank you.
Different, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else for the town planner update?
Uh, that's my general update, yes.
So just the, just so I I put my cards at table, I'm hoping that we can leave around eight o'clock. This isn't early, you mean tonight, if that's a
I can make a motion now.
No, 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 we've got, we've got things to do. No, I just want to just, I I want to give you a heads. I don't, anyone's cut, no, I don't want to cut anyone off at seven fifty five. That's why I'm saying something now. I just, that's, so you understand what my intent is and if there's something important, let's let's get it out, surface it earlier.
Can I follow up on Mark's report about the progress of different places?
Please do.
So, does anyone hear anything, Mark, about Alex's project on Central Ave, the four condos down here?
Not recently, the, except for complaints about people parking uh in front of the head building.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But no, I I can check with Charlie about that. But I haven't heard, well, I emailed, uh, what was his name? Contractor guy.
Well, owner is Alex.
Alex, yes, Alex Flores. I I emailed him to ask him to please have the subcontractors not park in front of her building. And I haven't heard back since then, so.
Okay.
About that issue.
Reason to bring that up is if you recall, the other condo down there, which had six units, we had to do a onsite approval of the site work in order for them to get certificates of occupancy of the building. So we still have a step as a planning board in approving that site work.
Okay.
Isn't in accordance with the drawings. But you haven't got anything like that? No call like that?
Nothing, no.
Okay.
No, I'll I'll check with
Because he looks like he's got a lot of site work done.
Yeah, yeah.
On it. Somewhere along the line, we'll get a call. We should be getting a call.
Oh, yeah. I'll see Charlie tomorrow with the stuff.
You know, I'm curious about the, you know, we have the same issue on our agenda about the bonds and covenants.
Yep.
About those subdivisions that are so far along, if they have, has there been any requests for any bond or covenant releases?
Isn't that interesting?
Hmm.
Yeah.
It's kind of strange. You think they would because it's new, they're both familiar with it. I mean, I know, I know there's nothing up at Panther Place, but the other two are certainly familiar with that process. I hope with cash, I believe, aside. And I can't remember what we did with Curly Circle, whether it was cash bond or whether, or cash security or just a covenant. Either way, they're basically there.
Yeah, yeah, there's.
So maybe for the next meeting, we could figure out where they are, so that
Where the sureties are.
I mean, I feel, I I feel more comfortable letting them have what they're entitled to have. And then just leaving the percentage that they tell us needs to be left for the finish of the road, sidewalks, lighting, whatever's left, you know. I am curious about um the lighting, the street lighting on um the Aho project, because I think that's one of the first ones we
Oh, yeah.
Put in with the town specified, um, street lighting.
Mm-hmm.
That's on the drawings and whatnot, and then just want to see what it looks like. I don't think he's put the lamps.
I don't think the lamps are up.
No, the lamps aren't, the poles are up.
Yeah.
There don't seem to be any lamps, but that would help us looking to know what that kind of lighting, how it works on a street, whether we use it somewhere else. That's all.
Good, excellent. How about the October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two meeting minutes? Has everyone had a chance to review the edits I submitted? It may have been a while ago. I don't recall exactly when I did.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If there's a desire that this is deferred, so we can check, let me know now, we can defer this, but I think if we can vote on it, we'd like to, if possible.
I will say I have not been able to read them, so I will either wait or
Hey, they put you on hot speed, see?
Um, yeah, I haven't, I don't, so.
I remove, I remove my motion.
Okay, well, look, so let's uh, let's put that on the agenda for next, next agenda. One twenty four. Okay, thank you.
Oh, show off.
Old business, new business. There's a couple of things. I asked to send an email asking for, because this is the first meeting of the year and I I want to invite everyone to talk about, you know, if they have two or three things they'd like to accomplish this year. And we're going to get to that in one minute. Before we do, there's a little piece of old business we'll wrap up first. And then to discuss, uh, follow up on the Pocket Forest. So what happened was that on Thursday, after the Minnesota visit, there were a series of site visits, I think five or six visits of potential areas that we could, uh, for the Pocket Forest. And remember, this is a two parter. Where first, that's already been approved, the money, the funding is there for what they call, um, the proof of concept project, what do they call the, uh, the first phase, which is like a a a proof of concept phase. And then afterwards, there's, there's a sense that we want to know which sites should we apply for grants for, which ones merit pursuing for grants. So, we looked at the sites and I think thing I'm very excited about was that there was consensus that for the very first phase, it's a site that we, we, we actually came up with here, uh, at the planning board, which is East Main Street at the bridge. Um, if you're coming into air, be the left hand side where there's that slope and there's that concrete staircase. That's going to be the pilot. That will be the pilot location. That was the, originally the pilot location was considered for Depot Square by the trains, but there are uh, uh, some issues with that. I think actually the East Main Street is the better site and that will be the pilot site. That was the, the agreement and there was enthusiasm from everyone who was on the sidewalk for that this was a great site and because it meets air quality, water quality, visibility.
Neighborhood.
Yeah, yup, neighborhood equity, justice, all of that. And I'm very excited about that. And then apparently for the next round, the top sites were, let me see if I can get this right. This, the, the old school Chikrapond Road, that was a corner of, 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 um, Sandy Pond and Westford Road.
Yeah.
That was one. The other was the, uh, the high school. And then the third possible contender of now, isn't it?
Church Parking Lot.
The Church Parking Lot, Shirley Street.
Church Parking Lot, Peroni Park.
Yeah, and then, and then those, so it looks like that, that, that the two leads seem to be the high school and the old school were the two most popular. With Shirley Street a strong contender, uh, with a big question mark because the property isn't owned by the local parish. It is owned, of course, by the Archdiocese. And so that's going to be investigated and looked into to see that disposition. There were other areas that looked at, I think there was a general consensus about Peroni that certainly that area merited something like the Pocket Forest, but there's so many other things that need to be done that the kind of a, a, a attitude, the prevailing attitude was that we really need to look at this within the context of a, a overall plan for Peroni Park. And I, I think that was very sensible. So, I just wanted to bring you up to date, you know, with what happened with the Pocket Forest. So that is moving forward, the pilot places, the pilot location has been identified. And they're, I think, whittling down to what the other potential applications for grants might be for, for continuing that. So. Talk two or three things. Yes, Jeff, would you like to go first?
I have to apologize. Um, I was going to bring the, uh, M R, Non-Insufficient Regional Planning Group met this week. I think it was this week or late last week. It's been a blur. And I didn't bring an update. I apologize. I'll bring it next time. You know how this goes? The meetings are great. The meeting took twenty seven minutes this time.
Really?
Yeah, we just blasted through. It was a lot, it's, it, it was more of an update meeting. And, um, actually, you've all been receiving emails from Karen Chapman about systems planners.
Yes.
Those are the big hits in the meetings. That's what's been really being discussed.
Yeah, Marjorie changed. Probably crossed, that's true.
And, um, there really wasn't much else besides that right now in the Montechusa. I'll check my notes, but I'd like to tell you what happened right after the meeting, but it wasn't that much. It was literally twenty, Thursday night, it was like twenty seven minutes later. We were done. You miss it, don't you?
No. But thank you. I, I should have said this at the start of the meeting and I, I apologize for my lack of consideration, but I just want to acknowledge, of course, Jeff's loss. And, uh, I would say that, you know, I should, I think I believe I speak on the whole board that our condolences to you and that are our prayers and concerns with you and your family.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You were out of the room when I said thank you to everybody in this area. That's okay. Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
Um. Okay, I mean, I'm just going to throw a couple of things, just two things I'd like to do this year. I mean, there are many other things, but the two top ones, one. First is, uh, I, I would like to do the, that mid, the five year review of the master plan. And I would love to, you know, and what that would involve is again, a little working committee. And then really just approaching the heads of the relevant departments, just get an assessment. Where are you in terms of the goals listed? What revisions would you like to make? And then as a result of that, it would be a two part thing. First, we, the working group will present it to this board. But then I would love it for representing this board to present it to the select board, because they should be, as the elected authorities of the town, they should really be aware of where we stand in terms of that master plan. I think this is a good exercise to keep us on track, but also it's good practice for us as the planning board, because we're going to be expected to show leadership when we come down to the ten year point and have to do, do it again. So that's number one. The other thing, and, um, I, I don't, and I don't mean to steal anyone's thunder, I'm gonna, uh, Ken approached me a while ago with some great ideas about some potential trails that we could do in the air that would cost very little money. And, and take not that much time because they're fundamentally based on either roads, paper roads we already have, or easements that we have. So these would be ideas that don't depend on buying private property, et cetera, which is pretty darn exciting. This is something I'd like to act on this year because it's low hanging fruit that would be a great benefit to the town and everyone would get great pleasure from it. So that's, that's it. Those are my two.
Question, the, how much mapping would those trails require or would it be a good thing?
Oh, I've got
Now, we're going to talk about that. And, and that ties in, remember we talked in the last meeting about D L T A?
Yeah, yeah, for those.
That's what we're thinking, is if we want to do that.
That's not running, right? The, the, can you run that at all?
Uh, it's not running right now.
Forget about it. We, I, I printed out a couple of things, but the long and short of it is, if, for the court disclosure, these documents have been within town hall for over twelve months. Not on your desk. Anyway, the long and short of it is, there's a couple of places in town that we already have town rights of way. One in particular is really easy. It's off of Howard Street. I'll just give this
So how many, how many different locations we looking at with this?
This is only four here. It's probably more. There's controversial ones that need a lot more depth. That means, that can go off a lot of legal work and stuff, but the, the general idea is that that for years, people have been looking around town and asking, you know, where can we get connectivity? Here is the Moulton Space Residential. You hear it, it's in the town, the master plan, it's all over the place.
Right.
Okay, so these are just simple locations that I've got, that I've taken a look at. There's like four of them here. That one is, that right there, Jeff, is Howard Street.
I got it.
So the Howard Street right of way goes right to the rail trail property, right between two houses.
Actually, we had this conversation with Mr. Manolio years ago when I took him on a bike tour.
Yup.
He didn't want to go down there. I'm like, it's a right of way, we own it.
Right, so we own it. So that is real easy. And I've spoken to Dan Vanskaal Cook about all of these ideas as well. So they're all sitting there, you know, people have got them, but we have to follow up on it. This one, the second one, and I didn't explain it to Julie, but it's just off the Rotary. Right where you have the new garden, the new, uh, you know, above ground gardens.
Yeah.
Yep.
On the way to Devon's.
It goes over the old bridge.
Over the old bridge, right. Connected through the end of Marshall Street, okay? And that one, I didn't print up the, the, uh, the map.
And this is where we took out the, um, uh, the chestnuts. This is, this was the
Water chestnut.
The water chestnuts. This is where we haul them out and they're putting there.
Right, so that bridge, as you recall, that's got a bad god, bad god rail on it and the bridge is failing. So fix the bridge up and just clear the whole place up, put some, you know, stone down or make a trail out of it.
And our, and our new PFAS plant's right there, too.
Right. So that makes connectivity from a neighborhood on one side, gets you on the other side, you can loop around. This one is really kind of cool. Um, this is only because Jonathan and I actually hiked here today. This is way out by the, the project with the L, LNG tanks on that side of town.
On our Grotten.
Pitchberry.
Right off of the Grotten Shirley Room.
Grotten, so is that the old track?
The old track, right.
Yup.
So if you take the track and you walk down the abandoned tracks, there's an abandoned, there's a railroad bridge there.
Yeah.
It's in complete disrepair.
Oh, yeah. Is that the precinct, the old precinct bridge?
Yes, right, precinct bridge, okay. So you can walk across that bridge with ten, if you're very careful, like we have done in several different kinds of weather.
I, 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 I would decline the opportunity to walk my bike.
So this would, this would require a fund, this would require some kind of funding. And it would require going to the, the, to find out, to determine if that right of way is selling the control of B and M or whoever the heck owns it, not Pan Am, whatever.
This is, is it?
What the beauty of that is, that when you go across the bridge, you're in a Grotten Town Forest.
That's right.
Has miles of trails.
That's the key.
So that's the whole
That's the key.
And the continuation of that spur goes all the way to Pepper.
That's right.
Whereupon they're building a rail trail on that spur now in Pepper.
Yup.
Yeah.
I got it right?
Yes, the Squanico.
Yeah, the Squanico, the new Squanico Trail, okay, which connects to, uh, the gentleman's name, I forget his name, at, at the park up there and off of West Grotten.
Exactly.
The road of West Grotten. So the beauty of this, the, the selling point of this is that you'd need a small parking area to tiny parking area off the road. But as soon as you get over that bridge, you're on a complete trail system that leads you for miles through wetlands and woods.
This is actually, this is a well-known mountain biking area.
Okay.
Yes.
So that one.
And we actually, if you don't mind my saying, so we actually were around that area and guess what we saw? Uh, tracks from bikes.
Yeah.
Some people like, I love this, I love all of them, but this in particular because it does two things. One, it connects to a trail network that already exists. Number two is allows us to show off a, a, a point of historical interest, this old nineteenth century looking bridge that there aren't that many left.
Right, but you got to fix it.
It's worthwhile, that's, if, if we can get away across it.
If you could get that saved to walk across.
I imagine.
Well, I've seen people go across with bikes. You can do it.
Exactly. And unfortunately, the rail spur, it's not used anymore. The rail spur that goes into the industrial complex on our side.
It ends right there.
Yup.
Um, I'm thinking about Air Commons connectivity to the Grotten Forest.
Exactly. All of that works.
Exactly.
This one is, this is the fourth one for tonight.
And what's that?
This is a little tricky because, but it, this is, this involves, the town of Air has a sewer reason from the back of the hospital. That brings you down to trails that we walk now, if we're just talking about Air Solo Two, it's right adjoining, close to Air Solo Two. Not on their property. On property that's actually D C R.
And that's already been cleared.
So it's
I mean, there's already a trail through there.
Well, it's not always used as a trail anymore. It's kind of overgrown.
Yeah.
This would require, I was talking to the hospital, but because it's a sewer right of way. It's, it's got an easement there already. So the idea would be to just get that top of that easement cleaned up. And again, just install dense graded base or something, you know, gravelly surface to create what you'd see with your eye as a visual trail. Rather than trying to walk through the heavy grass. That would give connectivity to anybody at the hospital who want to take a break, go down, they do it now. They, and if you know, if you go down that, I've walked through there too, through the grass and stuff.
Did I say that?
When you get down to the trail, if you then just take a right going towards Grotten, and you come up to the next field and completely come right back to the hospital.
Because there's already a trail network in Grotten, in the fields.
Off a pace.
North of the hospital.
Correct. So it just basically creates a local loop right there for those people. And anyone who then lived up this neighborhood of Washington Street, okay, up by me and, you know, all the way up to Otterbridge Park and Otterbridge. Could just walk through the hospital parking lot, right to the rail trail. Just a second route right to the rail trail. And they're always talking about that. Even kids from the high school, you know, could come down the street, walk up to the hospital, go back down.
Yeah.
And then come back up Howard. You would actually build, if you use Howard and this together, you'd be building a loop.
Yeah.
Washington Street is part of it, the two trails to the rail trail and then back. A nice, probably about two mile loop.
Yeah.
If we just occurred to me, and this is probably one where we have to do legal work, but from Air Commons back through, um, I can't think of the name of the road right now, that's current air housing. That puts you on, um
Isaac Lane.
Yup. And then across the street, take a left down Rosewood, gets you to the rail trail from that side.
Beautiful.
You can't because it's easements and stuff.
You can walk through there.
Yeah.
I don't know what the, yeah, it's private.
Because it's private property, but when we did Air Solo One, we required them to allow people to walk back in there.
Oh, interesting.
It's not gated open. Wait, excuse me, we didn't require them to allow it. We, it's set up in such a way that you can go around the gate and go around the gate and get back in there.
That is, it's, in my case, what I'm trying to do here is start with, what does a town owner?
You're gonna, you're gonna end up on a national grid right away.
What you're talking about is what I'd like to see in the future, what you're talking about. How do we get private landowners to let us have some old trails, old dirt roads, things like that?
If I may build on that, excuse me.
That's the second.
The other virtue of this is not only are these intrinsically good themselves to build and I think people will be pleased with, but as we, it demonstrates our seriousness that when we go to other property owners, we talk about trails, our ability to fulfill this shows that we're serious about this and we can follow through. And I think that's an important thing to show.
And if I may, I grew up in a small town where we had trails everywhere and we went through. Walked school, never walked on roads.
Yeah.
You know, you cut across the playground, cut across. Some, some, some residents allowed you to walk down the edge of there, you know?
Yeah, same here.
These are also employment opportunity, uh, commuter.
Yeah.
Commuters, like, who don't have cars, who are young, too young to drive, can commute to work.
So the idea with this, I'm cutting it into two parts. The idea with this was to get, the planning board to endorse the idea. And then we would meet with the appropriate people.
Are we ready for a motion?
I would suggest that we maybe even meet next week initially to look at all this. And I want to read over the scope of the D L T A and see how that fits in, because there's also trail grant funding. It might be that the D, D L T A is set up to find the sources of funding for both, you know, land acquisition or easements and then construction. And we, yeah, there's, yeah, we could have a brainstorming session about how to approach it.
Okay, I agree with Ken, but, uh, should we have a vote to say that the board authorized it and we can pursue this issue?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought you were, who made a motion?
Do we want to make a motion now?
Sure.
I moved, I moved that, we move forward with Mr. Diskin's four initial, um, uh, proposals to approach M R P C for D L T A grant to create common access trails.
May I make a friendly amendment?
Please do.
Uh, M, M, is any other relevant parties necessary to get?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Please do.
Second, as amended.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nevertheless, thank you to everybody. So I'm excited.
I, I actually.
No, I should stop.
As an informational thing, if I may, there's two things going on that I'm, I'm, I'm aware of. One is, um, community preparedness, if you were familiar with community. So we did this before Mr. Wesel left town. Um, Bonnie and I participated in it. I don't know, were you in that?
I went down.
Yeah, it was.
At the DPW, yeah. So the community preparedness thing is happening. Also, um, I was talking to Dan Vanskoop, um, Dr. Murray, Bonnie, and myself are members of the Recycling Committee. And what's happened recently and.
I just want to say that's my husband, not me, or anyone who might not know.
I'm sorry.
He's not in the room.
Scott Murray, Scott Murray.
There we go.
Thank you, I'm sorry, he's been, Julie. Um, and one of the things that, uh, has come up in conversations with the DPW about how we do the town by cleanup and other, and other efforts here in town, and efforts in the school, is that the Commonwealth is moving towards sustainability.
Hmm.
And Mr. Vanskoop asked me if I would be interested in possibly, and has asked the Recycling Committee, is what are your views on, you know, recycling? Yes, recycling, but there's a sustainability part to it too. So it's not taking anything away from the recycling, but possibly expanding for sustainability, um, here in town. Sustainability also happens to fall into the planning's bailiwick in my eyes.
Sure.
Because as we build buildings that are solar-ready, blah, 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 more dense, more dense units in a small, you know, open space.
Sure.
There's a lot of different things that we've been doing that are around the sustainability thing.
Absolutely.
So I intend to, as I said to Dan, we were talking about it in December, now that one of us had any time on our, on our calendar, and we promised each other that by mid-January, we'd find a time to start talking about this. So I just want to let you know about that. And I'm, anybody who's interested in being involved in that, please step over.
Wonderful.
And one question, did y'all meet the new town engineer?
Yep, he was in the walk.
Yeah, sorry, I missed that too.
Thrilled about that, that's great news.
That's great news. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Ken, uh, so you had the floor to discuss this, it's kind of segue, was there anything else you wanted to talk about as an initiative you wanted to do this year? Before I ask Nathan and Julie what they're thinking about?
And Jeff, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
That gets me so excited.
I just wanted to point out as MVP, you brought forward an initiative that we already now have voted on and put into action. So I don't know how you're gonna follow that up, but let's see.
Okay, so this is, this is really important to me as a, um, there's conflicts in our zoning board, our regulations are, yeah, zoning board, zoning bylaws, I should say, for clarification, that have to do with affordable housing. So the Affordable Housing Committee, Janie Proveakis, came, you know, before us and said she was probably going to come back to us with an initiative that would come out of the Affordable Housing Committee. Remember the last meeting of the day before we were with the, the chair, the chair, to speak? So I want to clarify a little bit where we'll probably might end up going with that, because I'll be working with her on that. And the long and short of it is that when you go to the table of use regulations, which tell you, you know, the types of, uh, uses under the residential category, detached, single-family, two-family, and we call it townhouse or multifamily. Those are the three categories pretty much of housing that, you know, exist. And under those categories, we have some uses that are permitted everywhere and other uses that require special permit by the zoning board of appeals and others that are just plain no's. So for instance, in A one and A two, multifamily and townhouses are a no. I just don't think that makes sense in this day and age that we should. Um, um, so my issue for the planning board is if we could discuss at a future meeting, get down to black brass tax, whether we want to amend where we allow different kinds of housing in town.
I think it's critical.
So we can then step up and say, look, we, we, we think that two families, for instance, are allowed everywhere. You know, like, I think those whole cities have done this in the past, Minneapolis or other cities have said, you know what? Put a two-family anyplace, you don't have to go through a zoning board of appeals or the other necessary hurdles. And the reason I feel comfortable about, and the same with multifamily, multifamily potentially could be a special permit by the planning board, for instance, instead of a no. So it gives a regulation.
Is under an O S R D now?
No, I'm talking about this.
But no, similar to an O S R D.
No, it's not similar to an O S I D, no. O S I D would, would say that you need to set aside fifty percent of the land and you'd have to do other requirements.
But multis are allowed under the O S R D with the approval of the planning board.
They're not. That's the problem. The, the steps that happen here that I ran into, I tried to make it happen. And I asked a lot of questions to Charlie and I'm pretty sure I went to the town council on it. Because I was trying to overcome the language in the O S R D that's basically states that any type of housing is allowed.
Yes.
Unfortunately, the second paragraph says if it falls basically in this table.
It's got to be.
So there's got two sentences to it. And that's the problem I'm trying to overcome.
Okay. If I may, would, is the intention, is, is the intention to, 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 to be, to prepare ourselves to be able to present a warrant at the, at the spring meeting?
No, fall meeting.
Fall meeting?
Okay.
Aiming for the fall meeting?
Right.
Is that because it takes, because this takes so much time?
Well, we're gonna have to have meetings and hearings and understand we do it right, go to town council, you know, go to Charlie, what do we need to go to? Let me read you the, the paragraph.
I, I, I believe you.
No, I, I, because it's, it's.
I know we've discussed this multiple times.
But I read it by you. You read it to the town council.
Yes.
Exactly. The allowable residence, this is under the permitted housing types, and this is pretty complicated. The allowable residential units may be developed as single-family, two-family, or multifamily dwellings, provided that applicable special permits or site plan review requirements for the land used district are satisfied. So she landed on the language for the land used district as being the table. So the, under the, under this district table, it says no in A one and no in A two for multifamily. It's actually no in all of them. And no, it's P in general residence, excuse me, which would be down in a densely. But the chances of having a lot that's big enough to be an open space residential lot is pretty limited down here. So that's the problem. So what I'm trying to overcome is that language and, and make a commitment that, and I'm, I'm not saying that we need necessarily to do it as of right, but that we could special permit it for the multi. So there's some regulation, but I'd rather have, you know, the zoning board of appeals doesn't need to hear this, but I would say it to them if they were here. I'd rather have this kind of a permit be a special permit from the planning board than from the Z B A. So it controlled the whole step of the application from its site development to its, whether it's a no S I D or not, or whether it's a multifamily or not, the entire process. If it needs a special permit for something else, the whole process would be under the planning board. As far as residential, so I'm not asking to step into the commercial, you know, stuff, I'm just talking about the residential. That was my pretty much summary.
I think this is also great. I, I just want to, uh, I've been approached, uh, uh, Mark is in pain. I'm just gonna get simple. He's having control with this, need me asked if we could go early. On the other hand, I do not want to silence anyone, cut anyone off. So, um, I want to ask if it's okay, I, I promised the next meeting that the three of you didn't have a chance to speak about what you wanted to. I promise you will first under new, new business, old business. Would that be an acceptable thing for you? Are you sure? Nathan, you okay with that? Julie, Jeff, you okay with that?
Thank you, yes.
All right, I, because I just, I don't want someone to be here in pain, that, that doesn't make any sense. But at the same time, I want to make sure everyone who has something to say is, is heard. So i- i- if anything, give it some thought. If you want to bounce some ideas, bounce them off of me, Ken, Mark, and just bounce them off each other. But I think this is exciting and I'm, I'm actually, as you can tell, I'm pretty enthusiastic about the trail thing. And I also think reviewing the zoning makes a hell of a lot of sense, uh, because of all that we've experienced in the last three, four years together. What we've seen with these applications. Is there any other old business, new business that was, is important that we get to tonight? Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Four. Three.
Second.
Second, I want to thank everyone for their patience tonight. Thank you. And, uh, Mark has said that probably by, not tomorrow, by Thursday, he'll have some answers for us regarding Air Solar Two and some of the questions we had. Regarding the status of this August plans and this letter, but he's gonna, we'll, he'll be in touch with us, so check your emails. And I know Julie will, I'll circle with a text as of the.
That's good.
Remind. Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you.
Are we adjourned?
We are adjourned.
Thank you.